Good evening. Welcome to our April 14th School Board Work Session. The time is now 5:30 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Dine people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Julian?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on into our agenda, Anne Rizzo, Consultant with Education Elements, and Sarah Baver, Senior Education Consultant with Education Elements, will work with board members to the finalizing of a district strategic plan. So with that, Anne and Sarah, I will turn it over to you guys unless Dr. Minor had anything.
I have just a few opening remarks and then we'll turn it over to our facilitators. Mostly thanking our facilitators for working with our district for the past year. We started this process about one year ago today with building our community feedback options and opportunities. Anna and Sarah were up in May of last year conducting focus group interviews with the community and then have facilitated both our facility working group and our steering team that created the draft that we see in front of us tonight for the strategic plan. That's gone through a bunch of different iterations and they'll go through the process in detail but want the board and the community to know how much stakeholder feedback has gone into this process. And thank everybody that has participated in it, that it really is informed by a large group of stakeholders in the community. And I feel at this point in time, it really is a community-built plan. And so I'm excited for the board to start digging into that and seeing where this may lead because this will be our strategic plan for the next five years, which sets our goals and initiatives for continued school improvement. So excited for the conversation tonight and to see where this may lead and I'll turn it over to our facilitators.
... catch up with us. So again, I'm Anne Rizzo, I'm one of the consultants with Education Elements. Work primarily with districts across the country in strategic planning, leadership development, as well as some HR-specific work. And so it's a privilege to be back here in Fairbanks. To be back here in Fairbanks in order to give you all an opportunity to really dive in deeper to the work that we've been doing over the past year. I'll allow Sarah an opportunity to quickly introduce herself as well.
Hi, good evening. It is wonderful to be here with y'all, thank you. Moving in a little bit closer, I don't have a great range. As Anna was mentioning, very excited for us to go through this process and talk about, one, how the plan was created, how community and stakeholder input has informed it at every stage, and then move us through a conversation where we have an opportunity to talk about connections, clarifications, and also discuss potential ideas as we move closer towards ratifying the strategic plan. So excited to get this work underway.
Thanks, Sarah. And Kelly Freehite is also on this slide. She is supporting the work from afar. She is our managing partner of client success, so she has also been connected to the work, so just wanted to name that. Again, our company, Education Elements, we work with schools across the country in a variety of different solutions. But what our support has looked like in Alaska, as well as previously supporting Fairbanks, is we've had a longstanding partnership with the district, helping implement a variety of different initiatives such as personalized learning, blended learning. There was also something called COVID that happened a few years ago and we supported the district in their return to school planning with that. We know that that was a big challenge for all of our partnerships across the country. And so we were really honored that Dr. Minor reached back out to us to help us to help craft the strategic plan that we have spent the past year developing. Over here, just to review our agenda before I dive into some framing for this evening. So first, we're going to frame how we want this school board session. It's really important for us to give you all an opportunity to first understand how the content was developed, the process with which we used, as well as diving into some of that community engagement that took place over the past year. From there, we will then allow some space for reflections and feedback. We know it's really important for the board to be able to internalize and understand the content and then ask any questions before we talk about what comes next after an implementation. So first, to dive a little bit more into the check-in and framing. So first, when you are working with Education Elements, we know some of you have been in our sessions previously. The first thing that you can always expect from us is we like to start with a check-in. And I do know that's coming from me as a former high school counselor. But would love to just hold space now to hear reflections from the board in what you hope the, how you hope the community views the upcoming strategic plan.
Any board members? Ms. Julian?
Sure, I think that the community right now is probably looking to us for a vision forward. And we've been in such a deficit mindset of cutting, 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 and closing facilities and closing schools and redistricting that looking forward, I mean, one of the things that we're hearing from our community is, what is there to look forward to and give us a reason to continue to invest in and to also enroll in the Fairbanks North Starbrough School District? So that vision and framing that vision forward, I think, is really important.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I am hopeful that our community will look at it as very much similar envisioning, that it'll actually be energizing, innovating for the community to look at what we can offer our kids, their children, our children, over the next five to 10 years. That it's progressive, forward-moving, student-focused, and that it's including a wide swath of community stakeholders, not only in the initial stages, but on through into implementation.
Mrs. Hardy?
I guess I'm hopeful that they see this as their plan and that they're partners in both having created it and also its implementation. I feel like it has the potential to be a guiding document and a much stronger version of that than ones we've had in the past. And so I'm hoping that's where it goes.
Any other board members at this time? Okay, go ahead and continue.
Thank you all for sharing those reflections. I think for us, and hopefully you hear this in the process, I heard a lot about the community seeing this as a driving vision for moving forward. We are very well aware of the difficult decisions that Dr. Minor, his team, the school board, as well as the community has had to go through over the past several months. And we hope that they not only see themselves represented in this plan, but also it shows a, develops a clear direction for moving forward and unifying the Fairbanks community. So thank you for checking in. The second thing that you can always expect from Education Elements is we love to bring protocols to any of our sessions. We know that there is a lot of content to go over tonight. Recently, one of the partners at our company made fun of me because he said that I love a hundred-slide slide deck. But you know, that is just because there is so much important content that we need to get through, but we also want to know that it's important to hold space for school board reflections. And so as we are going through describing the strategic planning process and how this content was developed, we would like you to think about these different gradients of agreement that we will ask you to share once we dive into that last portion of the session where we're talking about reflections and discussions. So as you can see here, represented on a scale of strongly agree, you feel like the components of the strategic plan are really tightly aligned to the community. You agree with the vision moving forward. Two, we hope we don't have any gradients of disagreement on the strongly disagree scale, but where do you see opportunities of things that you are not on board for and things that we need to spend a little bit more time discussing? So again, once we get into the reflection piece and diving into the discussion, we will ask board members to share their gradients of agreement for each portion of the strategic plan. The next protocol to help facilitate which, what we hope to be a productive and efficient conversation is thinking about ways for the school board to bring proposals for any areas where there are some of those gradients of disagreement. So we would ask that if there are any disagreements that school board members would bring a proposal to help us move forward to a space where we feel a little bit more aligned as a group. And so here you'll see objections are valid if they first will move us closer to what our desired outcome is. So again, reflecting the community throughout the different components of the strategic plan. Are they based on known facts and not assumptions? And then for this last piece, we know that this can be challenging. Do not rest solely on personal word choice or preference. This can be some of the most challenging part of the strategic planning process, especially as we invite other members to take a look at what has been created as we know that word choice has a lot of deeply personal meaning to different people. But is this safe enough to try for us to move forward? Does it still represent the clear vision? Does it represent the community? We encourage you to think about how you can bring proposals that meet these different criteria when we hold space for some of those reflections. I believe everybody also has post-it notes. So as we are going through, talking through the strategic planning process and the content, we also invite you, whatever is most helpful, jot down different post-its. You all have your laptops if you want to type down any reflections, just so that way you're able to capture your thoughts. Talk about these different gradients of agreement when we move to that space for reflections at the end. And so with that, let's go ahead and dive into the strategic planning process. So first here, it is really important, this is something that Education Elements prides ourselves on in our strategic planning process, but your plan should represent the identity of your community. So we know that we bring in the, we are the experts in the strategic planning process itself. The people who are, we, the partnerships that we serve, you all are the experts in the Fairbanks community. And so something that we wanted to be really intentional about, and I know that Dr. Minor and his team felt passionately about this, was how could we be sure that we were collecting intentional community engagement across the entire district? So that way, this plan was something that people really saw themselves as being a part of, not something that was being done to them. And so through that, we had different layers of our teaming structure that I want to quickly go over. So we had the project team that we worked with very frequently. We've gotten to know over the past year, which has been lots of fun check-ins that we've had with each other. So this was made up of Dr. Minor and his team, as well as school board members, just to help us run the day-to-day management of the project and logistics. We also had a steering team. And so the steering team was a very diverse group made up of current students, teachers, school administration, district administration, other staff members, community members, and then parents and guardians across the district, who really served as our representative body, who would take a look at all of the community engagement data that was done and then craft the strategic plan based off of their own perspectives and experiences in the district, while also holding true to the community engagement data that they reviewed. And you all, as a school board, have the opportunity to review what the steering team has come up with and ratify the strategic plan to move forward, ensuring that it aligns to not only community input, but to the district priorities moving forward. And so here you can see that we had different layers of involvement. So our project and steering team really are our driving recommenders who created the content, who are presenting the strategic plan to you. A lot of input was sought from the Fairbanks community to allow you all, as a school board, to be the ultimate deciders in ratifying the strategic plan. In terms of the strategic planning process, so as Dr. Minor said, we kicked off almost a full year ago. Time flies and also sometimes it's really slow depending on how you're looking at it. But we kicked off this project and this spanned a year because we wanted to make sure that we had several intentional layers of community engagement throughout. I want to say that this slide typically only looks like a couple bubbles in each of these different phases, but this is not how we chose to approach the strategic planning process for this district. You will see that we brought steering team members together multiple times in order to review community engagement. The community engagement was not done at just one phase of the strategic planning process, but multiple times throughout. And so the finalized strategic plan that we are presenting to the school board members to ratify and move forward is not that first iteration, but it is really what we are proud of as a final or close-to-final product that represents all of the different layers of community engagement and really thoughtful intentional work to make sure that this was something that represented your community. So I've talked a lot about the importance of community engagement. And so these beliefs really kind of underpin our process and our beliefs to the strategic planning process. So first, community engagement allows us to build investment from the beginning of the strategic planning process, so we don't have to ask for buy-in at the end. We have engaged the community multiple times throughout the past year. We've asked, we've had some targeted focus groups. We've also had some wider, broader nets of casting some community-wide surveys in order to get as much feedback as possible to ensure that we crafted the strategic plan in a way that the community would resonate with. It also ensures voices are heard, especially those who are not typically involved in the strategic planning process. So you heard me mention earlier that students sat on the steering team. That was an important part of our process and also always provides really insightful feedback, especially as we are designing initiatives that we want to test or the direction we want to move forward. We wanted to be sure that that was representative of all layers of the community, knowing that students are going to be greatly impacted by a strategic plan. Teachers are going to be impacted by a strategic plan. And so we did not want this to be something that was done by a small group of people in a room, but instead was very representative of the community. And that ultimately allows implementation of the strategic plan to be more successful. In a lot of our strategic planning partnerships across the district, what we commonly hear is that a strategic plan is created, but then it just lives on a shelf and it's never referenced, or different community members don't really understand what it means, what their, what their call to action is through it. And so building this plan based off of our different layers of community engagement is an important part of the process to allow for more successful implementation. These are some quotes that we always like to pull, just to really show the why for Fairbanks. Again, Sarah and I had the privilege of conducting several focus groups throughout the past year. We've conducted different surveys and throughout those reflections, it is always humbling to hear community members thank us for the opportunity to speak, to contribute their voice to the process. And you'll also see here a quote of a student who shared a really wonderful thing about micro-communities that are formed in schools that are really based upon positive connections to teachers. And so, one, it shows that community members feel really valued when their voices are heard and asked to be brought to the process. And two, community engagement also allows us to highlight some of the strengths that each district that we sometimes can get lost in the shuffle of other, the other decisions that you have to make. So it really highlights those strengths, as well as highlights opportunities that we know that we want to improve, to move forward, to ensure a consistent and positive experience across the community. This next slide here just summarizes some of the numbers of community engagement. And so first, I want to talk about 10 weeks in total were spent engaging the community. When I showed you that roadmap a few slides ago, I said that this was a really detailed roadmap. It doesn't typically look like our other strategic planning partnerships. And this is why, because Dr. Minor and his team felt it was so important to go deeper than just our typical approach of community engagement, but to do this in several iterations throughout the strategic planning process. You will see here that we have 24 focus groups that were conducted. Our typical strategic planning process approach only includes eight focus groups. Instead, we conducted 24 throughout May, both in-person and virtual, in order to make sure that all community members had an opportunity to contribute. Dr. Minor and his team also did a lot of really intentional reaching out to ensure that this opportunity was not only available to those who always sign up for those opportunities or who are the first to sign up, but that people who are not typically asked to bring their voices to the table felt that it was really important that they were heard. We conducted three community-wide surveys throughout this process. And we also made sure that some of our focus groups targeted specific groups. Again, you saw some quotes from students there. I had the privilege of talking with some high school students back in May just to deeper understand what their experiences are across the district, as well as some of their hopes for the future. And so what I also hope to be true as we engage with the strategic planning content tonight is really just the acknowledgement that there have been several intentional ways to engage this community and that we have really tried to make sure that this is super representative of your community by taking multiple different approaches to this. Here are some highlights that we saw from our first survey that went out in May. So 71% of survey participants said that they believe that staff across the district care about each other. 68% believe adults care deeply about students. 56% said it was easy to communicate with their school leadership. And 65% believe that the teachers across the district motivate their students to do well in school. So again, talking about how surveys give us an opportunity to see what are current strengths across the district, as well as what are some areas that we want to continue to see growth in. And this slide is really just, again, to highlight and go back to that roadmap and how we leverage community engagement at multiple times throughout this process. So after kicking off again in April, during May, we did a community-wide survey. We conducted 24 of those focus groups, both in-person and virtually. From there, we took a look at all of that was a wealth of data for Sarah and I to analyze. We brought that to our steering team during our initial in-person session, review session in August. And August through November, the steering team had an opportunity to take a look at that community engagement data and start to identify what was the vision, what were some potential pillars that we saw based upon the trends and the challenges that emerged from that initial round of community engagement data. From there, throughout November through January, we engaged in another round of community engagement to test out what the steering team had developed thus far, specifically looking at feedback on some of the strategic direction, as well as the initiatives. And then from January till now, we have refined all of that content, again, with both the steering and the project team, to ensure that we created a plan that was representative of the community. So let's dive into the planned content specifically. And so looking at the strategic direction and what each part of this means, the vision really shows where we are headed. So what is the direction that we hope to be true for all students, all staff, all community members across Fairbanks? The mission highlights where you are currently, what are the current strengths that the district has. The values serve as our guardrails and the focus areas or pillars are really the direction of how we will get there. This image represents this idea of responsive planning, which essentially is the approach that we took, again, talking about all those different touchpoints of community engagement, taking in new information and making adjustments based off of what we saw. And so let's start with our mission. So you can see the current mission statement is listed first. After reviewing all of our initial community engagement data, we invited steering teams to reflect upon the current mission statement to see if they felt that it aligned to what emerged from that community engagement data. And so some considerations to that conversation were, what do we feel the district's current strengths are? Why do people love the district? And from there, we went through a couple of different iterations, but ultimately landed on, as a community, we create supportive learning environments where all students thrive. You will see that many of the main ideas from the current mission statement are represented in this updated mission. But based upon some of our community engagement and testing out the updated versions, we heard from people across the community that they wanted something that seemed a little bit more direct, something that was more easy to remember and represented some simplicity of language to allow them to remember a powerful mission statement that still indicated what they hoped to be true across the district. Moving on to the vision statement. So this represents the direction that we are headed, what do we hope to be true as our North Star. So you'll see the current vision statement. When we asked steering team members to reflect on this based off of the community engagement, some of those considerations were, what do we feel that students across the district need? As well as what do we hope to make us the standout in terms of across, across the state and across the country? And so our updated vision statement was empowering every student to achieve their full potential. Similarly, this does represent some of the ideas in the current vision statement, but community members liked that it was shorter, they felt it was to the point, and created more accessible language. Next are our values and guardrails. So moving from the current values to the updated values, we had some conversations with the steering team and just thinking about scope. So essentially, if you prioritize everything, you end up prioritizing nothing. And so what we challenged the steering team to do was to take a look at the current values of the district and the community engagement and think about, what do we feel are our non-negotiables to help drive the community forward? And so what do we hear from the community in terms of what they value? What can guide our decision-making process as we think about implementation of the strategic plan? And what values do we feel are really important to model for our students and across, and across the district? And so our updated values are belonging, community, creativity, and growth. Once we identified these values, we also asked the steering team to think about, what do belonging, community, creativity, and growth really mean in Fairbanks? And so from here, I will pause to give you an opportunity to read each of these value statements that was crafted by the steering team, along with the project team, and based upon some of the community engagement feedback that we sent out to test out our current values. All right, as former educators and facilitators... All right, as former educators and facilitators, I know we talk a lot. You all have heard from me quite a bit. I'm now going to turn it over to Sarah to talk, uh, dive in deeper into the pillars.
Thanks, Anna. So again, putting this in perspective, when we think about the components of the strategic plan, we've talked about our mission, so we want to be building off of the current strengths to be able to move towards our vision, the future that we want to head in. And our values that Anna just showed us are those guardrails for our decision-making and the last missing piece are our pillars. So what do we need to prioritize? How will we be able to get from our current strengths with our mission to realizing our vision in actuality? Our pillars give us that direction. So through the process, again, as Anna mentioned, that was very intentional with multiple layers and rounds of community engagement. And through our collaboration with the steering team and analyzing that data and using it to identify trends of what needed to be our focus areas, we arrived at four pillars that we have in the current strategic plan that you're looking at here. So I want to pause again to give you a chance to see these pillars at a high level before we dig deeper into each one. So the four pillars that we landed on are achieving educational excellence, supporting access and choice, partnering with our community, and investing in our people. I'll give you a moment to read those pillars descriptions so that you understand with those titles what they are encompassing. So now that you've had a chance to read those pillar descriptions, what I want to do next is walk through each of those pillars in a little bit more depth, particularly highlighting what we heard from the community that really illustrated why these need to be our focus areas in our strategic plan. And again, to remind us of where we are in our process, we are getting closer towards our open discussion. We will be able to offer reflections and feedback. So as I speak through the next couple of slides, know that where we're going next after that is to be able to take each of these components of the plan and open that for conversation. So when we think about achieving educational excellence, what you see on this slide is a combination of quantitative data that we took from our survey that we did in May, as well as some of that qualitative data through conversations that we had both in person and virtually with a wide swath of stakeholders across the district. And so when we look at those percentages first for our quantitative data, they really help to highlight that holding high expectations and implementing those expectations, both for students and with support for our staff, is a really important priority that we need to give additional focus to. And you can see some of that provided with a little bit more color and texture when you look at some of the quotes that we pulled here to illuminate this as a focus area. So I'll give you a moment again to read and look at some of the data on this slide around achieving educational excellence. Moving on to supporting access and choice. Or before I do that, I do want to also talk about some of the impact metrics that will help to define success for achieving educational excellence. And so one of the things that we did in partnership with the steering team as we zeroed in on this as a focus area, we not only worked to describe it really clearly and think about what would be the specific initiatives aligned to that, but to be able to get there, we first needed to have a really clear vision of what success would look like for this pillar in particular. And so you can see on this slide with these bullet points, more detail around what success will look like when we talk about implementing and achieving educational excellence. And one thing that I want to highlight when you look at these impact statements is how they speak to not only what achieving educational excellence will look like for students, but also what that will mean for staff. When we think about the strategic plan and knowing that community engagement with various stakeholders across the district were really important for the creation of it, we also want to make sure that our vision around success will speak to multiple stakeholders. So moving on to supporting access and choice. Again, that same process, you can see a combination of quantitative data pulled from the surveys that we did as well as qualitative data from our conversations. So I'll give you a moment to look at that community data of why that highlighted the need to focus on this pillar. And so as we move into the statements around impact of what success will look like for supporting access and choice, again, you can see how some of that community engagement data we've highlighted is represented here in our vision for success. Speaking about what supporting access and choice will mean for underrepresented groups, what it will mean for all students and their families, and also what that will mean at the school level. So I'll give you a chance to look at that. So two more pillars that we want to review before we move into conversation. Second to last is partnering with our community. And building off of some of that high-level survey data Anna shared at the beginning, we can think about partnering with our community both as building off of some of the strengths that the community engagement process helped to highlight as well as, as what you see here from this quantitative data and focus group data, some particular areas that we need to give attention to, especially around partnership and communication. And one data point that I want to call particular attention to is that 39% of survey respondents believe the district reflects values of the community. Again, when we think about this plan holistically, even though we're going component by component, it is really important to understand how all of these components work together in a really integrated fashion. Knowing that we saw this piece of evidence that helped to point us to wanting to prioritize partnering with the community as a pillar. What we did around the process of updating the proposed values also speaks to this data point that you see here. So as we move into that open conversation that we'll be getting to in just a moment, we'll be talking about the values as well as a pillar like partnering with the community. Again, want to really focus on what we heard from the community that really supports what you see in this plan. And as we move into looking at impact for partnering with our community and specifically the ways that we will know we are successful, a couple of things to highlight here is that success doesn't just look like being informed and knowing how to access relevant information, but also helping to share some of that decision-making power with having clear opportunities to give feedback. So our last proposed pillar is investing in our people. And we've pulled one particular percentage from the survey that really highlights the need to focus on this as an area. And also, as you can see on this slide, we pulled a number of quotes from our conversations that I think really helped to illuminate this as a priority area. So I'll give you a chance to read those quotes because they contain a lot of really great insight and detail. As we move into looking at the impact statements for investing in our people, again, you can see the description around investing in our people really highlighted not only talking about attracting and retaining high-quality staff, but making sure professional learning is engaging and supports meaningful, actionable implementation at the class level and ultimately leads to the district being an exemplary place to work. So now that we've had a chance to hear the story around the process of how we got to where we are right now with looking at this proposed plan and then digging into the plan's content, we want to move into open conversation around reflections and feedback for each of the components of the proposed strategic plan. So again, to remind us in thinking about those layers of decision-making that have been really critical to this process, we were really intentional with a multi-layered process to gather input from the community. And as we looked at those components of the plan, that was really coming from the work that we did with the steering team, who were here as representatives of to recommend what you see in this proposed plan. And what we want to accomplish in our next conversation as we are moving into open discussion with reflections and feedback is believing that we can get to a point where in a future meeting, the plan can be voted on and ratified. And so to make sure we can leave our working session today with that in mind, again, reminding you that the process we're going to take as we move into this conversation will be first grounding in our gradients of agreement. So we're going to go component by component and ask you to share with us where you fall on this scale with one representing strongly agree that you really like the component, that you believe it's representative of what the community has shared throughout our very intentional and involved community engagement process. All the way to the other end of the spectrum being five, strongly disagree that you are not on board with the proposed component. In between that, with giving particular focus to something like number four, where more discussion is needed, maybe there's more clarification that is needed, or maybe there is a proposal that you have that you would like to offer that we will spend some time discussing. So thinking of these gradients of agreement, once we get a pulse check of where you fall on the spectrum, where we'll move next is to thinking about our three Cs. So talking about connections, so what resonates with you with the strategic plan component? What clarifications do you need? So questions that are coming up either about how the component was developed or maybe clarification about the language that is used. And then moving into critiques and specifically thinking about critiques with this idea of a proposal. Do you have a proposal that you believe will move us closer to our desired outcome? That is not based off of any assumptions, but is based off of known facts and also does not rest solely on personal word choice or preference? So thinking of that, we're going to return back to where we started by looking at our strategic direction and talking about the updated mission and updated vision. And I'll pass it back to Anna to lead us through this portion.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. So as you look at the updated mission and vision statements based upon what you heard of how we got from the current, uh, mission and vision statements to the different iterations that ultimately allowed us to put, submit these, uh, updated versions in front of you, I want to first ask the board, uh, we can do a show of hands here, to represent their gradients of agreement with these two statements collectively. And then we will split them out as we need to. All right, I see some, yeah. All right, let's go ahead and jump into the next part of our protocol before, uh, giving some space for, uh, discussion. So from there, uh, since I saw some varying levels of agreement, I saw some breaking protocols happening, that's totally fine. Would love to open up space just to hear, uh, our three Cs. Uh, so what connections are, do you have with the current, the updated mission and vision statement? Are there any clarifications that are needed on how we got to this process or maybe, uh, previous iterations before we move into critiques?
Mr. Doran, I had seen your hand. Did you
Did you have? Okay.
Appreciate that clarification. My apologies.
Ms. Carol Hubbard and then Mrs. Julian.
I voted one, that I strongly agree, and I think that it's very reflective of all the work and that it's, I don't know, I think it's great. I'm not sure I could approve upon it, so it's very good.
Mrs. Julian.
Yes, I think I'm also leaning towards one on both of them. The one, and I won't get into critiques, what I like is that they're both focused on students. And having that student focused in both the mission and the vision, I think, is grounding. And that's the, that's where I really connected with this. I also, in regards to the mission, which I think that I would say the mission is almost a one for me, the word "community" is also, to me, encompassing of educators as well as students. So I like that that aspect is kind of implied in there as well. And of course, family connection as well. So I felt very connected to the updated mission and vision. Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy.
I was the one on both, and it's been interesting watching it change because I remember when we first started this, I really liked our old one, and now I'm very much like, no, these are an improvement. And I also really like that part about community, and I think it impacts, or can't find the right word, but that this is everyone's plan, everyone's mission, and it's inviting all of our stakeholders to continue to be a part of the learning of all of our students. It's that it takes a village. So by putting that directly in our mission, we're saying we understand that we are one part of the process of helping our students thrive, and it takes all of us to do that.
Ms. Maple.
I just like that they're actionable statements, like a mission statement that's so abstract that it's not actually actionable is the worst thing to work with. So I like that they're concise and clear and actionable.
I agree with all the above. Anything else on the board? Back to you, Anna.
All right. Thank.
Mr. Dorn, sorry, I didn't see your hand over there.
Regarding the mission, I'm not in the camp on the idea that it's where we are currently. It should be where, what is our focus, our purpose. And I would suggest that we actually finalize document, we reverse them, we should have an idea of where we would like our student, where we want to go, what that vision is, and that the mission supports our movement in that area. But for the mission statement, I can live with this.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Are you saying that you feel it's important to list the vision first, or that you want to swap the, which statement is attached to mission and vision?
I would suggest that we list our vision first and then our mission is part of our purpose, our focus towards that end. Because we have one thing as a school district focused primarily on K-12, although we have some pre-K, but we, you know, so if that answers your question.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Saying nothing further.
Any points of clarification? So questions about how we got to these two updated versions before we move into critiques?
Ms. Maple.
It's interesting because it's what Ms. Julian commented on really liking, and then I think Ms. Hardy agreed, the community in the mission statement. And I recall that being a conversation at a steering. Can you, do you have notes or anything that could clarify how we landed on opening that with, with that word? Although trying not to wordsmith, like you said, we shouldn't.
Yeah, absolutely. So going back to my notes and from what I recall from our conversations, I would also invite Sarah, Dr. Minor and his team, who are part of the process. But you will see community mentioned multiple times throughout the strategic plan. It emerged as one of the strongest values, really, as we went through this process and heard from different members of the Fairbanks community. I believe that the steering team felt that they really liked the call to action of what this looks like as a mission statement, not just for teachers, but for all staff across the district, as well as working in partnership with parents, with families to collectively support the students moving forward.
Anything further from anyone else on the board? Go ahead and continue.
All right, let's move into our third C. So any critiques that you have for these updated statements? We can obviously break them apart and talk about them one by one. And just taking us back to what is the update, what is your updated proposal as you move forward?
Any critiques from the board? Mrs. Julian.
Yeah, on the vision piece, I was reflecting on the, one of our, our main pillars, which is our focus areas, I should say, which is that we want to invest in our people, which really, to me, meant investing in the educators to help support them. And I saw a lot of feedback there going through that slide. So when we look at the vision, or, you know, kind of where we are headed, only focusing on students here feels like we might be leaving out a major pillar, which, which in an area of an improvement that's, that we're seeing that's needed, which is to support the people that are going to empower every student to achieve their full potential. And I wonder if there, if there's a way that we could include them so that they see themselves and that pillar and focus area more integrated in, in that vision of where we are heading.
Ms., yeah, Ms. Maple.
My question is like the opposite end of the same question, which was in pillar four, investing in our people, which is the group that I got to work on. I was noticing that it's the one pillar that doesn't mention the word "student" once. And it's very obvious to me why everything about this pillar is student-focused, because we need our educators to educate our students. But similar to what Ms. Julian said, I wonder if there's, if there would, if it would be beneficial to really make that explicit, both on the one end and the vision statement and in the investing in our people piece, that, you know, everybody sitting around this table knows that they, that, that those two pieces are intertwined, but that perhaps it does beg for clarification.
Anything else from any other board members? Mr. Dorn?
I don't know. There was a question. Did they want to respond to it before I make my comments?
Yeah, absolutely. So throughout our conversations, you will see, yes, the word "student" is used in both the mission and the vision statement. And we felt that creating some parallel sentence structure between those two was really important. The steering team had multiple conversations about, does this need to be specifically focused on students? Or do we broaden that to just learners where you can see the staff be represented in both of these statements? Our final conversations, and this was based on some community feedback, was that some of the direction being set of the strategic plan did need to be actionable in terms of students. So what two of the board members had highlighted just in their initial reflections, especially given that the pillars open up different opportunities for all students, or all staff members, all members of the community to engage in learning throughout the process. I would submit a, depending on how board members feel, I think there is an opportunity here to submit a proposal where we change all students to all learners, but my suggestion would be to change that for both the mission and the vision statement, knowing that that's not just on word choice, but it does change the purpose of the updated mission and vision.
Mr. Dorn.
Focusing on the vision at the moment, I really like the first part of it, empowering every student because, and I, and, and that's specific focus, because that's why we exist as a district, as for the students, kids. I am, I find the second part so vague that it's actually limiting when I talk about to the full, their students' full potential. At what point? When I look at the vision, I look in terms of what do I hope to see in our graduates? Sometimes reflected in our skills and things of that sort that we hope students to have. How many of us wound up in things that we never expected to be in? And when we talk about potential, that itself is a limit, assuming there is an endpoint, an end product, so to speak. And I'm aware of so many students, the first one that comes to my mind is a kid who came to us in kindergarten, who could not walk, could not get off the floor himself. And the medical field told him, told the parents, parents told us, that was, you know, all we want him, if we can get off the floor into a wheelchair, that was the big thing. Our OT did not see that as his potential. Short story, he walked and is walking today. But where he goes, or where, you know, we watch Steve Wozniak and Jobs, you know, they quit school, messed around in a, in a garage, and we know where they wound up with Apple. We don't know those potentials. And so I find that very, very limiting. And I would hope that we're empowering every student to achieve what? To leave with what? You know? And I purposely, you know, one of the protocols is not word choice, so, I mean, I have my vision for kids, which is very focused on skills and what I hope that they can do when they're 25, 35 or stuff, so, but I'm hesitant to, because that's not necessarily, but I am really concerned. I love the empowering every student. The full potential, I think, cuts things off for students, and I think we should be looking beyond that. The last thing I'll comment on this point at this time is in terms of the mission statement and why I like the vision is on students. That's really it. In the mission statement, that supportive learning environment is where we also are addressing staff, because we have to support them in order to support that learning environment. And so I think they are covered there, but it has, we have to really keep student focus at our center.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. And then we had Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. As far as the vision, I too like the empowering every student, and I like the focused being on the student. I, I feel like the student needs to be at the very top, and then that's what's at the top. And everything underneath that is supportive, whether it be teachers and professional development and all of those things, those are important, but the student has to be the star on the top. So I would, and empowering every student to achieve, I know we're not supposed to wordsmith, but if you stopped it there, I mean, that's kind of an open-ended, that means the sky's the limit. I don't know about full potential, I hadn't thought of that. Mr. Dorn always has excellent ideas, though. Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes, I like them as they are, but I'm also open to the idea of swapping student for learner in that, like, every email I sign off is those who dare to teach must never cease to learn. And so I think it broadens the audience, will still, for most people will see that as a student. I don't think it's, it's fine either way. As a special educator, I read full potential very differently when I, because I've worked with students with widely differing abilities than their peers. And I do see that that potential, and that's what I've always told my paraprofessionals I work with them, is you don't get the right to tell somebody what their potential is. And I like, one of my quotes was like, never let someone's limited perception of your potential, you know, keep you from achieving, because that's their perception, that's not yours. The idea is that potential exists for everything, and everyone has the potential to continue growing forever. That's why you can never cease learning. But as a special educator, I like that it's, we're, we're not saying every student will take algebra, because not every student will, but I've had the joy of watching students I taught in an intensive resource classroom walk across their high school graduation stage. And how they got there was very different than how their peers did. But man, did they reach their potential and are continuing to do that. So it's, I feel more open, but, you know, that's my perception of how those words work.
Ms. Maple.
My perception is in line with, with Ms. Hardy's, that I totally understand this concept that it's vague, full potential is vague, but I don't think that that's limiting. I think it does what Ms. Hardy does, in that we're opening this up to every student to achieve their full potential, that, that it's vague because it is different for every student and for every classroom and for every unique learning environment we have. So I do agree that it's vague, I just like that it's vague.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. I'd agree with Ms. Maple and Mrs. Hardy. Yes, it's vague, but I really like it, and I, like Mrs. Hardy said, potential, everybody has a different potential, and it isn't something that holds you back, it's something for everybody that can keep you going. So that's kind of where I'm at on it, but I'm also a three, two on some of it, so like if we needed to do a little bit, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for those critiques and reflections. I did want to point out that in our initial drafts of the updated vision statement, the steering team tried to define what that full potential was. And so we had a couple of different versions where it was talking about academic lifelong success, but what we found was we got too into the weeds when we tried to make that more specific. That rested a lot on word choice, and some of the community feedback that we got was really focused on that piece. And so what we tried to do was then look at it in full potential with exactly what Ms. Hardy and Ms. Maple mentioned of, we are not defining what the potential is for each student or each learner, but instead allowing them to find that journey and supporting them along the way.
Mr. Dorn, did you have another question?
Just a reflection on it as I'm listening, and then we can move on from, or, I mean, others may want, you can move on from me. So I will say, and others have heard this, that my hope, my vision for our students, that every student will become a competent, confident, caring, curious and contributing citizen, which is very open-ended, and what you do with it, what we want our graduates to leave us with in going ahead. My real concern is on potential, is that when it's, my implication is at some point you've, you've reached that point, and especially this as full potential. And that changes over time, how many of us might have seen ourselves in the seats we are now? Or at different points in our, even our professional lives, or as a parent. There's so much more, and that's why I do find it is so vague, and I'm glad the conversation was around that, it's that. And some, we want openness, because when they leave us, they're our graduates, they're not stuck at 18 as an ending high schooler. But I would challenge us to really look and say, how do we broaden that out? How do we open those doors more so students themselves don't look at themselves as, oh, I'm going to reach a point? And, but that they feel that indeed, when we talk about growth later on, that that is there, and you don't reach an endpoint, which I think this implies. and you don't reach an end point, which I think this implies.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
I guess I never saw it as an end point. I saw it as, as, as a process of empowering someone to take them to the top of the mountain and sort of go fly. Where are you going? We don't know. But that's what I envisioned. I didn't envision it as an end point. I envisioned it as, as a launching point.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. And we will go back to you, Ms. Riz, oh, Mr. Burgess.
Figured eventually I should say something.
You've just been so quiet over there.
I'm, I'm kind of in the middle here. I, I, I kind, I agree, both of these statements are, are fairly vague. And I'm, I was trying to decide how much that mattered because I know that we get into specifics further in the plan. And that's kind of how these things should build. So in a way, it makes sense that it's a little vague or open-ended. I, I hear what Mr. Dorn's saying about potential, being potentially interpreted as an end point. I don't, I don't know that that's really how I see it. And I think truly empowering someone would not be to reach a point and then let them rest. Although that might be nice, too. But, but to, but the empowering part, I think, is the really key phrase here. Because, you know, the other thing that occurs to me on the vision is, you know, are there, do we have students who don't want to achieve their full potential? You know, so what are we empowering them to do? We're empowering them to, to make their own choices, to decide on, on where they can go in life on their own, right? So I don't know if, I don't know if achieving full potential is really the, the words that I would have used either. I do think that going from, you know, what, what we've done is we've taken envisioning each and every student, changed that to empowering every student. I really like that. Then the next part, achieving academic and life success by personalizing the learning process goes to achieve their full potential. So we actually lose that last part of our current vision, personalizing the learning process. I'm okay with that because we can get into that later. But I just, you know, I'm just trying to kind of frame what, how worth changing these things. And academic and life success has changed to full potential. And I just think that's something maybe, you know, I, I almost like the old way the better, better. Because it is a little bit more specific. Of course, success, it can also be debated as far as the definition. So I don't know that I just, that I said very much just then. I mean, I said a lot, but I don't know. It was very meaningful, but I'm just kind of trying to sort this out in my own brain. And, and I do think that I, I understand where, why these changes were made and where they're going. I'm just not sure that I completely sold on taking something that we had that was, was more specific. And, and I do think it was actionable and changing it into something that's more vague and, and general. I don't know. But then again, you know, going from the broad to the more specific in this plan is, is, is fine. Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of in the middle here, but I'm, I'm, yep, that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. So we got Ms. Herbie, then we got Ms. Julian, then Mrs. Hardy.
So I just want to speak up briefly as your communications person and then also as someone who's been a part of the steering committee and been a part of this process. So, you know, we've had this whole strategic plan and then we have a draft new one. I would say this is not meant to be a reinterpretation of our old strategic plan. This is a brand new one based off all the feedback that we've gotten in the, in the, from everyone. And just something that I heard a lot, and I just want to kind of bring it up again, is that one part of the previous mission, or previous strategic plan that did not feel accessible to people was that it was really lengthy and I, in my opinion, a little overspecific on things. So like, I knew the mission statement because we hear it every time in the board meetings. But if I didn't sit in this board meeting, you know, all those board meetings, I would not, could not rattle off our mission statement. And when they asked in one of the meetings, what's your vision statement? No one knew it because it was a paragraph. And so I totally hear what everyone is saying. It's, it really is hard to do, like, how do we get at when we want to have all these really specific ideas, but when we want to leave it broad enough that it, people can apply it to themselves, whatever their situation may look like? So I just wanted to speak up to that, that the, what we got a lot of feedback on or that I heard a lot was like, I don't know as a community member what these things are because I can't remember that. So we really, the reason these are more short, compared, especially compared to the previous plan, is because that was something that came up over and over and over again. It's like, I want to, as a community member, be able to say, yep, here's our one line, that's our mission statement. Here's our one line, that's our vision statement. So that teachers can, so we can ask a teacher, any teacher, and they could actually recite it to us. And that, so I just want to speak up to that because that was something that I really heard a lot in the feedback from everyone, and I just wanted to, to put it out there.
Thank you, Ms. Herbie. We have Mrs. Julian and then Mrs. Hardy.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate this conversation on the updated vision, which is empowering every student to achieve their full potential. And it's definitely gotten me thinking a little bit about, and I'm not trying to wordsmith, but I'm trying to make a recommendation that might capture the, the essence of what we're talking about, to not be limiting and not also say that the, a student is only successful if they're achieving their full potential. But wouldn't it be cool that if we can get students to a place where they realize the potential that they have? And then it's up to them because as Mr. Dorn said, that they are going to launch into society. And I love the, all those words that you said. I want to write those down next time you say it. But, um, that on their own, they, they realize the potential within themselves. And so I like the word realize because it mean, it doesn't, we're not saying that they have to achieve it to be successful. But just the fact that they're realizing that they have this amazing potential within them. And then what they, what they do with it is really up to them. But if we can get to a place where students can see within themselves the potential that they have, isn't that amazing right there? Versus saying they're only successful if it's by this measurement that they're actually achieving that.
Mrs. Hardy and then Mr. Burgess.
Herbert, why do I want to say? Herbie, I know, but Nico was in my head. And I was like, no, it's, it's Herbie, and I couldn't get there. Said almost everything that I, I was going to add in that, like, the process, I started out very much where other board members were, and I think it's because I like specificity of language. I like big words. And it was a learning process to sit there with all these community members and everyone else and be like, oh, that is not what they want. This is not, I, I even, I think one of these came out of Ms. Gray's group. And everything that resonated with people was shorter, simpler, easier to remember. And something I like about this, too, is, you know, you could put this on the back of a sweatshirt, Fairbanks, North Suborough on the back, empowering every student to realize their full potential or to achieve their full potential. That's catchy. That we can remember and it's marketing and branding and we can work with it where I might have the mission statement memorized, but like, most other people don't and it's not accessible. These are, and they're things that I could teach to my nine-year-old. And he could repeat it and understand every single word. So I think that's a, a good reason. Like, I'd buy a sweat, I currently bought the one that was put out, that's, you know, I love Alaska Public Schools. If you can read this to a teacher, I think it would be better, you know? Something catchy like that. So there's a reason why they're more brief.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. I bought that sweater, too. Mr. Burgess.
I'll just say thank you to Ms. Herbie and Mrs. Hardy for, for those comments that, that is really helpful. And I do think, I, I hear too, especially that, that the simplicity of the message is, is, is key. And I, I know that's a, a tenet of public communication, so. So thank you. And, and I do, I also agree, yes, it's, it's not just catchy, it's a kind of inspiring, right? Like, like I, that, I did have that thought when I first read it. And that was, you know, my first thought, oh, it's pretty inspiring. And I thought, but isn't it a little vague? But, but maybe that's okay. Maybe that's okay. So, so yeah, I, that, that's very helpful comments and I'll let someone else chime in there. Oh, but let's, let me just, just for fun, Mr. Dorn's five Cs. Compassionate, caring, confident, curious.
Contagious. Okay, my five Cs are competent, confident, curious, caring, contributing citizens.
That's technically six Cs.
Yeah, he says five, I say six.
He's a rule breaker. Mr. Dorn.
So, but this will link into the six. I really appreciate the observation that Ms. Herbie made about we weren't trying to redo what our previous, actually, that was done the last time. We, it was really, this has been 10 years. We did some word changes, but basic plan has stayed. So I'm really glad, starting from a blank sheet of paper and moving forward. I, and I, and what I will say is that the vision statement of the old one, though, was only one line. There's explanations, but it's one line. This is one line, and I firmly believe, and I used to tell staff, when you give me your philosophy or your vision, what you want for kids, try a name that's six words. So my six Cs. I liked, Mr. Burgess brought forth in terms of academic and life success. That would add words. But something empowering every student to achieve or realize, I don't care which word there, academ, to realize or achieve life success. And even drop the academic because you need, everything we teach is academic. It's teaching skills. We're applying those skills, whether they be on a sports team or in a theater production or poetry contest or music, whatever, we're applying our skills through those means. So, but, so empowering every student to achieve life success. Technically, we're seven words because of the word two. But I think it gives us something more that says to people that we want their kids to achieve throughout their life and in the various aspects of their life. And, and I, and, and so it's broader. It is lots of opportunities in there. But I think it captures, and I'm glad we're starting with something new. Sometimes you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and we can learn from what we've done in moving forward. So it's a little bit of a combination. But I think that offers something a little bit more. We're looking ahead. And that's what I like with it.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Seeing nothing further from the board, turn it back over to you, Anna.
All right. Thank you for those conversations. At this point, I'm looking at timing, also being aware of as we move further in the strategic plan, it does give more specific. It feels a little weightier and I know that that is going to generate a lot of conversations as well. I also want to be able to offer the board and other members a break tonight if they need it. So I am going to turn it back over to say, do we need more conversation on the, it sounds really, we're narrowing on the vision here. Are there any additional proposals to move forward? Or would we like to move on to the next portion of the strategic plan and the values?
Mrs. Julian.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw another thing in there to be visionary. And also that might be engaging for students to see themselves in it and get them excited. Because thank you, Mr. Burgess, for saying, ooh, that's really inspiring. But what if we were empowering every student to realize their dreams?
Thank you, Mrs. Julian. With that, we are ready to move on.
All right, thank you. Some tech issues here. All right. Moving on to the values and paying specific attention to these value definitions that were created by the steering team based upon the community engagement. So first, I am going to take us back to our gradients of agreement in looking at these values collectively, knowing that you'll see how Sarah had mentioned earlier that all of these different components of the strategic plan do create some continuity and were designed together with purpose. So looking at the values collectively before we dive into specifics, would love to see our gradients of agreement on the proposed values. And I'll invite board members to hold up their fingers. All right, great, you, well, great. Thank you so much for sharing. Now I'm going to move us on to our three Cs. So opening up space for any connections that board members see to these proposed values.
Mrs. Hardy.
Hey, it's nice seeing where it's come along. I know for me, when we were sticking, sticking notes up on the wall to do this, like creativity, there was a huge conversation about, is that a value? And I am personally very connected to it and very happy that it made it in the final draft for what might be.
Mr. Dorn.
These values, as if they're comfortable, you know, two, three. But the thing where I am uncomfortable with it is that, and I really want to say, I appreciate in the presentation how you put current and then projected. Because that really helps me. But the one that really stood out to me as we don't have is that student-centered focus. And I do think that is an embedded value that has grown in our district, particularly over the last 10 years. And board discussions around student-focused and a lot of our work sessions, our meetings, conversations are, well, focus on the kids, we need to center that. And I think that's a value that really resonates with our community and that they expect. That each of our decisions and even conversations about whether people in the community agree with what I, how I vote on one thing or another, you know, different board members, what I keep hearing is the sense that, especially with our current board, people say, but we know they're trying their best for kids. And so I think that's a value that is being recognized more and more coming to the fore as people have talked about advocating for public education and our community becoming more engaged in that. That, that's there. So I think that, these values, I, the way it's pulled together, I have, they're, they're fine. But I do think we're missing a very, very central one to us that keeps us in, keeps us anchored, that what we do, all of these are focused on what's our students, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Anything further from any other board members? Ms. Maple.
I look at the values as, you know, being what the, the vision and the mission are able to sort of lean on. And so I, I'm not opposed to somehow articulating what Mr. Dorn just said. And I also think that our mission and vision lend themselves to just that and that those values then support the fact that we are values then support the fact that we are, that student-focused, that it's empowering every student, environments where all students thrive, that those values all lend themselves to those statements at the top of the page.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Seeing nothing further.
Any clarifications that are needed on how we landed on these values throughout the And from there, I'll move us on to our third and final C. Any critiques with proposals on changes, adjustments to the proposed values?
Mrs. Dullian.
Yeah, thank you. I really, I also really like creativity, and I'm glad that it's in there. And to go, I keep going back to what are values, which are the guardrails around how we operate. And then what are, and I'm gonna oscillate here between the focus areas, which is how we're gonna get there. And the thing that, to me, that feels like there's things that I would maybe flip-flop is that creativity, to me, is something that I would love to see as a pillar, or how we achieve certain things. And I feel like what we're missing from a value standpoint is, and we hear, and we saw it in the, in kind of the focus area in the survey results, is more of that, kind of that academic rigor, or it might be tied to growth, it might be tied to just that, that's kind of like student academic piece. And I know that that's really reflected in the pillars. So I don't have a really thought-out explanation of, or a recommendation of, maybe you could flip this or that. But to me, it feels like creativity is absolutely a necessary way of how we get there. But academic rigor and high expectations, which are listed, achieving educational excellence, that seems more like that should just be a value. And one of the ways that we achieve academic excellence is by fostering creativity and problem-solving in everything that we do. But, so those felt a little bit like we could flip them, to me.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. I'm gonna throw myself in. Excuse me. On this one, I struggled with the creativity piece, I'm just gonna be honest. And my issues are probably a wordsmithing thing. And I'm trying to reconcile, and if that's what's going on here. But, gosh, I'm loud, that's my voice, I'm sorry. The empowering our students and staff to express themselves, that's the part I have a slight issue with. I don't know if it's wording it differently, if it's taking it out altogether to just have it say, "We are innovative in solving problems and finding new solutions and exploring new ideas," or empowering our students and staff to explore new ideas. Yeah. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I struggled a little bit with the creativity piece as well. And I also struggled with the, with the second half of it, which is to empower the students and staff to express themselves. I wanted to, I was in agreement with what Ms. Dullian said and Mrs. Burnett as well. It seems like there's, we're missing the educational rigor. And I don't know if it belongs, I don't know that creates, I don't know. It feels funny here. I wanted to see, you know, the value be the educational endeavor, the rigorous educational endeavor, but, you know, exploring new ideas in academics or in something. But, and creativity's amazing, but I don't think it, I am kind of with Mrs. Dullian. I think it sort of doesn't belong here. It belongs in the how, not the what. We're also missing integrity and respect. And I don't know that those words are so popular anymore, but they certainly are important to make good, well-rounded human beings who have integrity and respect, because I think everybody wants that and everybody values that. It seems like they use those words in elementary school maybe, as part of their platform of, like, character building and things. So I don't, I mean, anyway, I'm not exactly sure how to wordsmith all, and I'm not trying to wordsmith either, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. We are going to go to Mrs. Hardy, and then we have Dr. Minert.
And it's more a question, because when we did the values, and I think it was like a 20-minute discussion on the word creativity. So if you could enlighten us on that, it was all of us in the room, and it was very engaged.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hardy. I don't know if you could tell, I was chomping at the bit to get the mic. So I'm gonna take us back a little bit to our initial discussion with the steering team on values after they had a chance to review all of the community engagement data. And so we offered a list of, I wanna say, 56-ish values, knowing that all of them, integrity and respect, were on there. If you, look, any educator could look at that list and say, "Yes, all of these things are important." But in order to focus our discussion, we really had to look at a prioritization activity of, how do these get us to where we want to be? How do they support the mission and vision statements? How do they allow us to implement these pillars of what we're talking about? I'm gonna address creativity first, because I can hear that it's where a lot of questions are coming up. And it's funny that after we went through our voting activity, everybody on the steering team said, huh, when they looked at that, even though it was their votes that led to creativity showing up the most, you know? And there were some people, I think, who were trying to manage their votes in certain ways. But creativity really came up, and if you look at this value statement, it's kind of twofold. One, it's being innovative as a district and looking at what are new ways that we can support our students. I do think creativity shows up in the pillars, particularly in supporting access and choice, which we will get into later. Creativity also showed up of not just the schools and the district and the staff taking ownership of that, but what does that really look like for students? And thinking about their full potential, us not wanting to define what potential really looks like for each student, knowing that every academic journey is gonna look different. We are obviously going to be challenging and supporting our students to achieve high academic success. But we wanted to address the individuality of that statement, and what does that look like for every learner? And so that's why you see that there are kind of two ideas that were brought to a creativity. Creativity spanned a very lengthy discussion throughout our process. But I do think it was only second to community on this values list throughout that, once steering team members had a chance to really internalize and draft, what does creativity mean in this school district and what we hope to be true for our community.
Dr. Minert.
Man, you stole, I think, about, a lot of what I was gonna say. Certainly a ton of conversation around creativity. And do you think it's placed correctly? Because if you swap creativity with a pillar, then you're kind of confining creativity within that one pillar, rather than creativity being a lens that we look at through all of the pillars. So we continue to go back to these values as we're creating initiatives under the pillars and ensuring that they fit within this value set. I'll also say, not only was it popular within the steering team, but I think the word of the spring from the community has been innovation and creativity and calling on our district to do something different. And so I think it's awesome that it showed up through our steering team, but also it's something we can lean on to show the community that we're listening and we're looking to do different things, creative ideas and innovative approaches in the future. And having this here as a way to continually reflect back on, are we being creative? Are we trying different things that will meet the needs of our community?
So we have Mr. Doran, Ms. Maple, and then Mr. Burgess. And then Ms. Dullian.
This is probably the section that I like the best. You know, with the one observation that I made, that we should add something student-focused, centered, and that recognizes that we value what they, both what they bring and what they take away. As I went through, and I'll start with creativity, because that's the most recent one, but I do wanna just rec comments on each of them. What I'd like about them is these four and perhaps a fifth one, I think, are real spark to our initiatives. And when I read them, I can get excited about them. You know, when I look at the creativity, that focus on solving problems and finding new solutions is just key. It's key for the conversation, and in some ways, as an educator, they, my entire career, they have said, "Well, schools are gonna be different in 10 years. Our kids are different." And I will leave it there. I love the fact that it says, "Empower students and staff to express themselves and explore new ideas." This is the environment that we should be promoting, that kids can talk, they can bring up ideas out of the box. I love the popcorn thinking when I taught middle school. They are constantly coming up with stuff. You see that at every age level, but particularly focused in there. And I do think that, to me, I look at this description of creativity as reflecting more of a we-we solution. It's inclusive that way, and no one's in it on their own. The belonging, the things that really struck out to me is, I love the phrasing, "safe and welcoming environment, where each individual feels accepted, valued, and integral." That's our inclusion piece. That's a piece that we really need to know. And we have had students, family members, community members, who have been challenged with that in our schools. We've really worked hard to reassure them. That's where I think the respect comes in very highly, if you're going to do, bring this value to the fore, respect is key to that and that inclusion. The community, the part that really stood out to me and sparks my ideas of things as an educator and what I might do in a classroom in our school, as a district, is that phrase, meaningful connections. We're not in this alone. No one is in it alone. And I think that idea of that meaningful connection is important, that support for each other's growth and success. I'm reminded when we talk about life success and after graduation, just when we look at our community in terms of families, a lot of us don't have extended families in town. And people step in as uncle, aunt, grandma, grandpa, you know, just supporters. And I've watched that in communities, just somebody in that apartment complex who is actually the safe house to go, the safe person to go to. And I think that's part of that, supporting each other, encouraging them. You know, when people cheer along the track meet, or, you know, at a game or stuff like this, and they're sitting next to each other, and they may, you know, you watch students, they may be cheering for the other team, their high school, but they're sitting next to kids of the, you know, that, you know, "We'll take, we'll take a break, I'll cheer for my team, you cheer for yours," and then they're talking. That's our town. So I really like that. And then the growth one is that it is an ongoing journey and supporting the continuous development. When I read students and staff, I also, you know, the word that threw my, jumped in my head is graduates. And I wouldn't put it in there, because I think it gets distracting. It's our students going along, and that focus is there, but it really impacts them as they leave us and take what we've offered them, and they bring that forward. And I think that idea that we celebrate the successes is so important, large and small recognitions that we do. So I really like those values. I think they do spark the thinking that we need for what the initiatives might be and how we get there. But they, and they underlie, in nice ways for me, have the one in, my values that really underscore the other pieces of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. We have Ms. Maple, the Mr. Burgess, the Ms. Dullian.
I wanted to go back to what Ms. Hubbard, Ms. Carol Hubbard brought up about respect. And I can't do the same with integrity. But in looking at these values, because I agree that respect is, is a value that our district, I think, does uphold, and that is an important one. And I am okay with it not being one of our bolded words, because when I look at all of these, I look at belonging, because we commit to a safe and welcoming environment, we do that by showing respect. A community where we establish strong and meaningful connections by respecting one another. I can't do it with creativity. I'm sure I could if I tried harder. But that, you know, we celebrate successes along the way, that we recognize others' ongoing journeys by respecting one another. So I'm sure it was on the board originally when we were post-it noting it. And I'm also sure, I can only speak for myself, that I settled on these ones because I could still see respect within. There were some that, you know, as we narrowed it down, I'm like, oh, now this one isn't represented anywhere. And that's certainly one that I think is still upheld in these, and is definitely one that I, you know, a value that is high for me, that I would want to see reflected here and given. The word itself is not in there as it's drafted now, but I do see it in there. And maybe that means it would be easy to add it, or maybe it speaks for itself. But I agree that that's of high value, and I see why you brought it up.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Mr. Burgess.
I appreciate these values quite a lot, for many of the same reasons that Mr. Doran expressed. So I won't belabor it. But I do also agree that adding one about academics, or student, that student focus and that educational focus would be good. I don't have a suggestion right now for what that might look like. But I do see that there would be value in adding that value, something around students. And I do, I guess I will say that, you know, I do see that students and staff are mentioned in each of these, except the first one where it just says each individual, but that covers them. So, I mean, you know, I think that that's good that we have that in there, that we do focus within each value statement on students and staff. But, you know, kind of thinking about what Ms. Dullian had brought up and Mr. Doran, Mr. Doran's concern about having a student focus, I wonder if we can put something about educational excellence or something as a value as well, to make sure that we're all, that our thoughts are represented. Moving on to something a little more specific, well, actually, if it's okay, I'd like to ask a quick clarifying question, and then, and then I go on. Because I'm wondering on the value of creativity, when that first got put in, or if it's, if it came, you know, early in the process, or is it more responsive to current events?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question. Creativity, the values were actually identified very early in the process. So when we were here for our first in-person onsite back in August, the steering team looked at that initial round of community engagement data. And creativity, as I said before, was the dark horse of, you know, everybody voted for it, but then was surprised when they saw it end up. And then throughout our different layers of community engagement throughout the process, we extended those community-wide surveys to get some feedback on the updated mission, vision, and value statements, where we added in these value statements. This was something that we continuously heard of. If you'll look at the part where we talk about innovative in solving problems, that's really where that portion of the really where that portion of the value statement was clearly defined. And then I know throughout some of the decisions the board has had to make in the past several months, we have also heard that it come up in community conversations quite a bit. So it was very early on, but it seemed to be confirmed more and more as we went throughout this process.
Okay, great. So, so I guess what I'm hearing is that the, this community already brought forward those values and the district and board, or the district and steering team agreed strongly. So, okay, that's great to hear. Already anticipating what was coming next, apparently. So, so moving on, I, you know, because that's one that seems to be a sticking point here, I did want to ask for some clarification from, from members who have expressed some trepidation with the creativity or with part of the creativity value statement. And I just, I guess I will express that that second part of the statement, I find very important as well, as Mr. Doran had expressed. I think that if we're talking about creativity and innovation, we need all hands on deck. And the way that we get staff and students to bring up their ideas is by empowering them. So I, you know, and making them feel as if that's not just something that they can do, but something that we actually want from them. We want that feedback. We want to empower them. I'm going to need to empower my computer soon. But, but, you know, when it, when we talk about empowering students and staff, like, let's think about what that looks like and the importance of it, right? So we think about like, like I've been chairing the curriculum committee for the past year and a half, and the pilot programs that we have, that we, you know, teachers can come to teaching and learning department and propose a new course. And we have a process for that, that allows, that empowers those teachers to step up. You know, when we talk about students feeling comfortable to express themselves, you know, students know what they need. They're smart. They know what goes on in their classroom. Making sure we, they have that voice, that we, that they know that we want to hear that voice, I think that's, that's what we're talking about when we say empowering. And, and so, you know, I think that's a really very important part of this value statement is that empowering piece. I'll stop there, but I do, I am curious to hear more from board members who might not be comfortable with that about why that is.
I'm going to throw myself in real quick before we go to you, Mrs. Dullian, and then we'll come to you, Mrs. Dullian, and then Mr. Doran. As a dissenting person, actually, I didn't have issues with the empower, that, that isn't my issue. And actually, I truly, it's a wordsmithing thing. I truly don't have a problem with creativity or much in it. My concerns, though, are due to recent events, and I just want to make sure that our wording doesn't put us in a place of losing funding. That is my only and true concern. So, and, and it's just probably me overthinking, and I think that that's allowed and necessary at these points. I just, that those are just where my true concerns are. And past that, I have no intention on fighting this board on this. And I was at a three, as in I support this and would let it go through as it is. So I just had those concerns. Mrs. Dullian.
Okay, thank you. My concern around creativity was, is it in the right bucket? So not with, and I was very excited about it being here, because I think that at this point in, in our, in our, and I'm not trying to be political right now, but in this point in the history of our, our universe, I'm going to say it that way, with, this world needs incredibly creative thinkers to drive us, drive innovative solutions so that we can succeed on this planet. Okay, that's enough for me. But let me get back to the strategic plan. So, which is why I like the creativity. Thank you, Dr. Minor, for using the word lens. I think that that's, so using creativity as a lens of how we're going to achieve the pillars, I agree that, yes, it's in the, it's in the right place. So thanks for using that, for providing that word, because that, that is helpful. I, I too very much think it's really, really important that we are encouraging and fostering innovation and creativity, because without that, people, people need, ideas do not spark unless people think outside of the box. And the only way to build a horizon is to, to explore things that you aren't necessarily, you know, seeing every single day. So new scientific discoveries and, you know, it's, it's just very exciting to me. So I like that it's here and I agree with having it here. I also really believe that we do need to put the word respect. And so my recommendation there would be that in that, in that, in that belonging statement where it says welcoming environment where each individual feels, I would say, respected, because that implies that you are also respecting people, but respected, accepted, valued, and integral to the school community. I think that actually listing the word respect somewhere here is very important. And if we were able to add in some of the other pieces that people were concerned about, and I brought up as well, which is like that student-centered, also integrity, if we can build those into kind of the other areas of the definitions, that might help. I want to speak to growth because, and I'm really glad that growth is in here. Growth is something that we are trying to change the narrative on a statewide level that it, a student shouldn't, we shouldn't just be measuring based on are they at this metric or not, but where's, where have they grown from? What, what have they achieved? Where, what's their trajectory? And is that going up, flat, or down? Always going forward, but in what way? Growth is really important, so I'm glad that growth is in here. And, yeah, I'm just, I keep going back to this kind of like, this, this, you know, the creativity thing. And if I can quote Minecraft, because I saw it twice this weekend.
Lava chicken?
The overworld is where everything is possible. So it's like we are creating an overworld in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District where all students can realize their dreams. Who doesn't want to go to school there? I do. Send me back.
Only if we can get Jack Black singing Lava Chicken. Mr. Doran.
How do I, how do I follow that? I want to make an observation here about these values in action just a few minutes Bobby expressed a concern. Immediately, that sense of belonging community, Tony passed him a power pack. Okay, oh, is it from you? Okay, Morgan passed it to Tony, who passed it on, and, okay. So even more people in the community. But I think it's important to bring that forward, because also, when we talk about innovation, is I'm looking for the plug and trying to figure how we're going to get that cord there and who's curling under the table. So, you know, innovation, not my first thought for a power pack, but yours. Yes, I know you have Band-Aids, you have throat lozenges, et cetera, et cetera. So, anyway, I think it's important to see these in action. One of the things that really struck, struck me, and particularly as Mr. Burgess was talking about creativity, but the, these values and the fifth one, is student-centered, which is a shorter list than we had, so easier to remember the list. But what really struck me is these have been around for decades in our district. When I go back to when I really joined the district 35 years ago, one of the things that attracted me to, I can see in these, as teachers came to me in my role as principal and often would say, can I try this? I've got almost all the kids on track, but I'm missing, in some cases it's one, in some cases it might be two or three. I, I think if I try this, and that's that creativity, is that expression, that ability to come forward and say, hey, can I express something? But I look at each of these and say, okay, are they just a response to what's going on? And, and I say, no, they're decades long. And I've experienced them in this district. And I think it's one of the things that, when I tell people over 40-plus years of really watching the district closely, we've had our bumps along the way, but as a district, we have always moved forward. And our trajectory is in that direction. And I think these values have underscored that. I do think that the creativity and that idea of students expressing, staff expressing themselves, they need to know they're in a safe place. Students can try out ideas, can try out their thinking, and they need to be in a safe place. It's challenging to do it, and it's one of the wonders of teachers in dealing with that and, and doing it well. You know, not, I'm not saying perfectly, but well, and striving to that and, and such. And I think that's also in terms of what we say later on when we talk about professional development. We want teachers to get something out of it. And when we have professional development, either something that they have initiated themselves, or that we as a district has put forth and say, hey, look at these ideas and pick something out of it, try something. If it doesn't work, that's fine. Try something, one thing out of the whole thing. That they know they've got that opportunity. And again, it's safe. So I think these capture those things, what's really important. And I'm not really sure what the full reference is to jeopardizing funding, but I think is. But I do think there is an element as we move to the, ahead, which is what we're looking at, is we need to be able to know what we value and make sure we stand by our values and stand by our kids and our staff. And that it, these things are not just whether the state funds us, the Fed funds us, our local funds us. These are the things that underlie whatever we have in terms of those resources. I like the values.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. With that, it is about 7:30. We've got about an hour left with Ed Elements. I would like everybody to get a five-minute recess in to use the restroom and whatever we need. And then we will come back and I would like to move on into our pillars. We will take a five-minute recess. We will take a five-minute recess. Okay, we are back from recess. And I will now turn it back over to Anna and Sarah with Ed Elements.
Thank you so much. So after our very robust conversation where we've looked at our strategic direction, mission, vision, and values, we want to now move into our pillars, our focus areas. And so, again, to kind of recap, the components of the proposed strategic plan. Mission is building off of our strength. Our vision is where we want to head to in our future. Our values, as Dr. Minert said, are the lens that we're using when we think about successfully implementing each of these focus areas or pillars. And so now we want to check to see where we are with the proposed pillars that we have up here. So we're going to continue with using our gradients of agreement. I first want to approach this collectively. So rather than going pillar by pillar, I want to zoom out and ask the question, when you look at these pillars in their entirety, so achieving educational excellence, supporting access and choice, partnering with our community, and investing in our people, where do you fall on our scale of one through five? One being strongly agree, five being strongly disagree. So if we could have a quick show of where we fall on that continuum. Three ones and two threes and one two. All right. So knowing that we do have some support with reservations, I can live with this. It's not great, but I don't want to hold up the group. I think we do still have time to open it up for discussion. And so I would be curious for people who listed themselves as three, if there is a particular pillar that you would want us to focus on for this next step in the conversation.
Ms. Julian?
Yep. The only reservation that I have on any of these is I really want to explore supporting access and choice a little bit more as a pillar and specifically more of the how, that how we'll get into it. And then the other overarching reason that I put a three is that I feel like I need to have, we need to have more SMART goals in the how so that we can track, you know, milestones year one, year three, year five into this and then report those out towards the goals, the hows of how we want to get there is fantastic, but I just want a little bit more SMART goals. So that was the one pillar and then the overarching for me.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Question. Are we going to look at the bullets on how we get there, not the initiatives, the other, the parts, the bullets under each of these?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Okay, as we go through the pillars, are we going to go through so we have the, we take a look at the how we'll get there's?
The impact statements and then the initiatives. Yes.
Okay. All right. Then maybe I'll save my... Well, I have a couple things. In the achieving educational excellence, we get there, conversation around high and maybe the conversation that got that word in there. The supporting access and choice one. It was a phrase I got visiting a school just recently was students having a voice and choice, or voice in their choice. And I don't know that that wording needs to be here, but I'd like to talk about that concept. So yeah, I'll stop there. And then as we get into each one, elaborate on it.
Yeah. And then Dr. Minert, did you?
I was just curious if you wanted to go over impact statements versus initiatives for the board again and how that might roll out. That might potentially get to Ms. Julian's thoughts about specific metrics and timelines. Because when I think of initiatives, that's the work that we'll do down the road and naming those very specific things and sharing that out with the community.
So hearing that, I think it is helpful for us to revisit those impact statements. Again, when we think about impact statements, they help to define really clearly what success will look like for each pillar. As Dr. Minert was saying, the role of initiatives are more dynamic at this point in the process. We want to make sure that we have really clear direction in what we're prioritizing. And our success statements will help us to have that clarity. So achieving educational excellence, knowing that that was one pillar in particular that was named that we might need further conversation around. Let's take a moment to remind ourselves of the impact statements associated with this. And then we'll open it up for clarifications and connections before we talk about proposals. I think, Mr. Doran, did you want to kick us off?
I just wanted to come back to that distinction with initiatives. And for our process tonight, I talked with both of you. And I think Dr. Minert made that we're not really focused on the initiatives now because that'll be after we really get the plan. And then we really take a look at what, those are sort of our really objectives to achieve each step. And we're looking at the end product in five years. Well, we're looking five years. This is not next year's plan, it's five-year plan. And then how do we get there? So I just wanted that clarity. That helped me why they wound up in the appendix rather than something we're talking about, although in the draft initially they were there. So I'm comfortable with them. We're not dealing with them at this point.
Additional connections or clarifications for the impact statements under achieving educational excellence?
Mr. Doran?
Then I'll come back to my question about the word high expectations. It's a... And why I ask the question is it's an oft-used, again, a decades-long thing. We want to high expectations, et cetera, et cetera. Nobody says what it is. And they, there's sort of an implication or an understanding, well, they're harder. And I think that often, why I don't like the word is that if it's not hard enough, then we say, "Well, we got to make it harder." Well, what is harder? Is it higher that it's more abstract? It's more generalized, globalized, or it becomes extremely specific? But when we look at that is, you know, we often overlook the basics that sometimes you need the foundations. And I've watched the, as our district went with the Danielson model framework, that it's a piece of how you, where you'd like kids to come in the final product, in a sense. Those thinking skills, critical thinking skills, et cetera. But unless you also have the basics in there, and that's sometimes the time, what we need to teach. And we need somebody to feel that they're doing that well and stuff. So what I find in practice is that high expectations is either just a nice thing to say, but it doesn't really bring about action. And we tend to rank even courses. And I will tell you, I am more challenged in trying to change the oil in my car than I am in writing an essay. I am more challenged in cutting a piece of wood to fit in my entryway, actually, than I am, well, I won't use math because that has been challenging to me. It's in some courses and others it's been straight through. But it becomes a judgmental word that sometimes aces kids out or we assume that they're not taking this course so they can't do that one. And I've watched too many kids come through who can handle, you know, if you want algebra at one level but not at another level of their education. Lights come on or something. Or how often we have the student who says, "Oh, now I get it." And I used to look at fifth graders especially in reading. To me, that is the pivotal reading year. And the lights starting to come on and they really cooked with it in sixth grade. So that's my concern around high. It's as though, well, something, if it's not high, then it's something less than.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Dr. Minert, did you have something?
Maybe just a response to Mr. Doran unless the other folks on this side were responses to some maybe.
Ms. Julian?
I'll actually speak in favor of high expectations because I have my own student who excels really when those expectations, there's a sense of setting a high expectation. So I would speak in favor of that because I feel like when people are... And maybe the implication here of it only being a high academic expectation, but having high expectations, to me, speaks to being prepared for class, being respectful, carrying yourself with dignity. There's a lot more than just academic that I read in that, which is why I would, why I liked seeing it there.
Thank you, Mrs. Julian. Dr. Minert?
Yeah, mine was just going to be a response. And this really felt like one of those places where the community referenced this term a lot and over and over again in both the interviews that were conducted and then some of the surveys that the community used, high expectations. And I think part of that is a result of coming out of COVID and parents in the community wanting us to continue to have a high standard of learning for our students and have rigorous courses available. And so just wanted to point out that that did show up in community participation over and over again. And so I think that's why the steering team noted that in achieving educational excellence.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. We got Mrs. Hardy and then Mr. Burgess.
And you can put me back in because one is along that lines, but I had something else. And I'll speak in favor of high expectations. And I really like that it says that we're challenging learning experiences and strong teaching practices so that all students, and from a special education lens, and this is not a critique on our current classrooms, Ms. Hall. But, you know, a phrase used in the advocacy in special education community, especially in segregated classrooms, is rooms of low expectation. And that is what oftentimes those types of environments create. So saying that this is an expectation, we have high expectations for all our learners, no matter where they are, and that every single student can achieve that potential and they have a real potential. That's why there, like, there is documented studies that show that a teacher's expectations and where they are directly impact student growth and achievement. If you have low expectations for your students, they will achieve less than if you have higher ones and go in there. And, you know, you have to help them, meet them, and scaffold them. You know that as an educator, but your expectations should be, you can do this and the sky's the limit.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I agree with that high expectations is okay to keep. I also really do understand where Mr. Doran is coming from. And, you know, I lean towards keeping it both because it sounds like the community really wants that. We intentionally involve the community, so we need to, you know, I think we should try to honor what the community said they wanted as well. I think that high expectations can mean different things to different people, like many terms, right? And I think that, you know, as we implement this, part of the job is for us to make sure that it's very clear to staff what we mean by high expectations. And I don't think we mean that we want all students to take the most academically challenging classes or that that is the bar that we want to set with high expectations, right? That's absolutely not where I would want to go. Because I also am challenged in changing my oil. And I would expect that our CTE classes on automotive mechanics would have high expectations of both standards of behavior and achievement, you know. But yeah, I mean, I hear a lot of what Mr. Doran was saying, that it has that potential pitfall of setting up this hierarchy of what is best for kids. And it's not always the same. It's going to be different for every student. So pitfall to avoid as we implement this. But I am okay with keeping those words because I think that what is meant is that in each single classroom, we want to hold students and staff to a high expectation, both in terms of the academics and everything else that they're learning, but also standards of behavior as Ms. Julian was pointing out.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Beam?
Thanks. I had something in my head and then a lot of people kind of chimed in. So I agree with what was said just recently is that the idea here, I believe, would not be the fact that some, just because it's called an AP class, that we would have high rigor and standards in that class and not have them in another class. We would have high standards, no matter what the class is called, no matter who's in that class, no matter what grade they're in. It's still a matter of having high standards. And I think that we can achieve that. I think that we can move towards that. And I think it's important to leave that word in there because otherwise it just says that we have standards and that doesn't mean anything. So I think high standards, knowing that we avoid the pitfalls that we're concerned about, which I totally understand, but we have high expectations because the reality is you can have an AP class with low expectations and you can have a class where the kids are really struggling and are having a hard time reading and all these other things, but that teacher has high expectations. You can have that, you can have high expectations in every class. And I believe that that's the meaning of what this is looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. I want to remind the board that we're down to about 35 minutes with Ed Elements. And so I just want to kind of make sure that we're keeping our discussions as concise as possible so that we can get through as much as we can in the next half hour or so. And with that, we have Mrs. Hardy. I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, Ms. Carol Hubbard, I apologize. And then Mrs. Hardy.
It's okay, just two seconds. I concur, agree, agree, agree. I'm on board.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Mrs. Hardy and then Mr. Doran.
Mine is moving past that if we're okay with that. When it's, if we're doing the proposals and investing in our people, when I read the impacts and when I read what's written here, the one thing I feel is kind of missing is we're saying we're investing in our people, but what we don't say is that we're investing our time and resources. And I feel like that should be explicit and especially because the job of the board is to budget. I want to explicitly say, like, I'm going to invest resources and time is resources and something our administration's time is money. We pay people to be here. A proposal, but it can be different, is we invest the time and resources to create a team culture of continuous learning and growth where we value staff and celebrate their accomplishments would be one way to put it in there.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Mr. Dorn.
Rich, the two things, one is I appreciate the conversation about high expectations. That afraid I and I think it underscores. I am not advocating for low expectations. But it does strike me that's one of my concerns. We we put judgments on it. But I why I appreciate it and I'll leave that conversation here is that we need this is a document that should be a wealth of conversation and discussion of what it means so we know where we want to see that vision achieved. With investing in our people, again, that's an observation, not necessarily that has to be here. But I think we ought to be very mindful of when we talk about attracting and retaining, particularly the attracting, the importance of emergency certs. And this may go later on into our objectives initiatives. But how we make sure we use that as a constructive, positive recruitment tool to get people in the classroom with the idea of not just filling for a short time, but actually entering a profession for a long-term career. And and I think that's an opportunity that is in front of us and would really help parents to teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing at this time.
The two things that I want to reiterate from what I heard in this conversation we just had. I do really appreciate especially the discussion around achieving educational excellence and this clarity and understanding of the language that is used there, that intentionally educational was chosen rather than academic. Because when we think about educational, it encompasses academic and it also encompasses a lot of the other elements that you've named around behavior, how students are showing up and engaging in their learning. And also when we talk about excellence, it's that both and of achievement and growth. And so I think this conversation is really helpful again as we move forward and thinking about what does it mean, both at the initiative level. And the other thing that I've heard from this conversation and what many of you have shared, as we move forward in ratifying the impact statements, the next part of the process in the conversation is discussing what might be the specific data sources that we are looking at to measure really clearly this impact. And so an example that was just shared, especially when we think about attracting and retaining staff, what was offered might potentially become a particular data source that we look at to know that that impact was achieved. And so again, want to reiterate that this conversation is really helpful. Also, looking further down the line as we move in from ratifying this plan to thinking about concretely, what does it mean for implementation? I do want to check for supporting access and choice. If it would be helpful for us to take a few more moments to look at that. If people, I think I heard there was maybe some conversation around those impact statements. And so just wanted to make sure we collected.
Mrs. Julian.
Okay, so the supporting access and choice to me is it feels like there's a lot that we're trying to pack into those words. And choice to me is is kind of a political word that really, to me, when I hear that word, it means school of choice. That's when I that's what I hear. But I'm looking at what this says and I realize that's not what that means. What we're trying to do, and and it was going back into the the kind of the, I was reading some of the responses from the community. And the thing that really resonated with me was I want to see a higher quality and more rigorous programming available to all students. Kind of referring to and also looking at when we had 60% of survey respondents supporting exploring alternative education models and practices found at district charter schools. It would be interesting for me to, when I read that, and this is kind of my belief in in schools of choice models, alternative learning models within a public education system, is that those are not meant to become alternatives forever and ever that you're maybe quote unquote lucky enough to get into. But it's a it's a it's an incubator for different models to see could we scale those up for more beyond that school of choice? And so when I put the when we when we list choice as a word, as one of the four words that are there are supporting access and choice, I feel like it can get a little people can get a little bit, hear what they want to hear when they see that. And I and what I and I was really trying to dig into, what does that actually mean by the survey responses that were put in here and also the community process? So I'd like some more clarity around the community process to get there and to understand is is my understanding off from the community and also the administrative outlook, you know, that that got us to that phrasing? And if so, are there different ways that we could better represent what that intention was from the community around this? And then finally, I will say that as it is written, when I look at the community responses on, I'm sorry, on 29, I'm sorry, on page 30 and 31 of this slide deck, you know, that those responses, I'm very much in support of all of that. So that those were my thoughts and concerns around around that one.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Julian. I want to say first that your inclinations about choice and scaling options that we find in alternative models across the district is right on when we imagined that as we were developing this pillar. The word choice specifically came from more thinking about student voice and choice and creating some student ownership in their learning. So I think that as we were starting to design some of those initiatives and really talk about what is the impact we hope to see from this pillar, it's both and. So where does the community or where is the community really drawn to alternative models across the district? And how can we maybe take some of those practices and replicate that across the district? So it is an option for all students. This is the pillar where I think that the the creativity and the innovation really comes in, right? So it's exploring what are some innovative things that we want to do that can be maybe in isolation, that those are opportunities for a few, whether people apply for those opportunities. But how do we also take that and then create that across the district? Fine arts, for example, came up a lot in the conversations around this pillar of making sure that all students have access to the things that they want to and keep them engaged and with their learning.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
So I want to. Okay. I know we're not supposed to wordsmith, however, I'm going to wordsmith right now, sorry. So in the last like month, I guess, in the past month, the political agenda of the nation has shifted drastically. And there is a premise at this point in time that is that anything that says diversity is going to be kind of red flagged. And so kind of, I guess, out of concern mostly for the district. And so I got up at about 3 o'clock this morning and and I I I wrote this down. I wrote this in my phone and and this is what it says. I would like to help our district avoid ever being put under a microscope by any kind of an outside entity due to one word in a document. This term is currently very politically charged and changing the word to a synonym seems prudent. And so the when we say we will prioritize diverse and meaningful education, I kind of flew right over that because I get what we're talking about. However, I know there's an entire portion of this community that will take that and run with it in a very negative direction. And I don't want to see that happen. Could we use multifaceted? Could we use a variety? Could we try to be a? I just want to be aware of this and cautious because I don't want us to be under a microscope. I think that could be very detrimental to our community. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Dr. Minor, then we have Mr. Dorn and then Mr. Burgess.
On the vein of also wordsmithing, I apologize. But instead of the word choice, maybe it's options. So supporting access and options. And one of the things I've appreciated the second semester is a lot of conversations about our neighborhood schools being a great option for our families and kind of going along the lines of Ms. Julian's thoughts of charter schools, magnet schools being incubator for ideas. Those also can show up in neighborhood schools. So I'd love to see neighborhood schools listed in the impact statement or at least a second bullet of the impact statement.
Mr. Dorn.
I'm going to hitchhike on that. It's part of my comment was along those lines in the impact one. I do find the specific listing of charter schools in the impact bullets problematic because it basically says over the next five years, we want to create more charter schools. Or and and I and I was trying to think in terms of magnet focus or whatever a school would bring forward a community. There and I've seen it written both ways. The phrase I was remembering is responsive community schools or community responsive schools, I think is a better way to say that. That encompasses whatever that aspect of the community. It could be a neighborhood school saying, hey, we're doing great and we don't need to do it. What others might say, hey, to serve our school community, we'd like to try such and such, or we think we need to highlight this. I'm trying not to use another term like focus or magnet or that type of thing. I think multiple pathways is my but I do like the idea of having something. And I'll just suggest for now as a term, community responsive schools. The the other thing when we talk about alternative learning, and I'm glad it's learning, not it may be programs. It may be more integrated, individualized, et cetera. And what came in in terms of this options I'm comfortable with instead of choice, not having choice for the sake of having choice. I think we need to be cautious about that. I don't need that. That needs to be written in here, but I think commentary around this that it sparks that conversation, that there might not be choice in everything. But also it opens the door over the next five years to really look at what our graduation requirements are. And do we need to have so many? As somebody said, well, actually, Prince was talking to. And when we talk about voice, student voice and choice, four years of language arts, do we need, you know, what what are we really needing? And what choices can we give? And and I'll give an example that I hope my information was correct because I understand that the new CTE course on agriculture will be able to count as a science credit, which is so significant. And it involves a lot of science. It's science focused in order to do it. So so that was things make sense. And again, you know, it's just opening up that conversation. Just because we've done it this way, do we still need to do it? And and when we look at graduation requirements and we do want those options for kids who wind up, I can't take an elective because I have to get this done. And we we've winnowed down the number of electives over the years for students to be able to take, especially in terms of within the graduation requirements themselves. They can get more credits than what we require for graduation. But for for a number of those kids that they should be able to. So anyway, I think the the point is made so that we maybe think of that in here. The real word problem I have here is highlighting charter schools. The implication is we want more and more. Is that what we want or do we want community responsive? Or whatever terminology we come up with that's more inclusive.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. I agree with pretty much everything that Mr. Dorn just said. And I also appreciate Dr. Minor's suggestion to to use the word opportunity or options. I I would suggest opportunity might fit there as but I'm okay with either. And I think that that either of those options or opportunity would actually be more clear than choice, more specific. So in the interest of time, I'll I'll wrap it up here. But but I do strongly agree with Mr. Dorn that highlighting charter schools could be a pitfall and that community responsive, I really like that term, community responsive schools. I do want to speak very briefly to Ms. Carol Hubbard's concerns as well because what this sentence says here is schools offer a diverse portfolio of curriculum and course offerings. It does not say anything about diversity. It doesn't say a diversity portfolio. And and I think that I I hear your concerns about funding and and potentially getting, you know, you know, AI searching all of our documents and finding all these words. But it's going to show up in policy. It's going to show up in other places because frankly, it's a value that this community has diversity. And and it should be, and it's something that as a country we should value. And I'm not afraid to say that. I will. I will die on that hill. Hopefully not literally. But but, you know, I I think that we we need to be careful. We need to be aware of what's going on and how it might affect our funding and so forth. But but I think that second guessing ourselves because words are popping up that are similar to words that are being targeted or, you know, doing something just just like anticipating that we're going to get targeted and complying in advance. I mean, I think these are these are things that need to be resisted. Free speech is still a thing, right? So that's that's where I stand on that. I just wanted to address that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. We have Ms. Maple and then Mrs. Hardy.
Agree. And I was laughing also as you said, AI might search our things and find our things as I was over here using AI. Because I was after after Ms. Carol Hubbard brought that up, I start I just started picking the sentence apart and which we're not doing right now, and I didn't do actually. But what but one of the things that I came to was trying to like flush out what the intention is of that word and just to throw it to make things more complicated and then nope, it can just disappear. That one of the ideas that I put in and asked the brain of the internet to evaluate was prioritizing varied, meaningful and responsive educational opportunities, going off what Mr. Dorn also brought up. And I will tell you that the internet told me that that was more academic and policy oriented. I don't think we need to remove the word diverse because the word diverse is associated with, you know, things that are getting flagged. And, you know, to your point and to to Mr. Burgess's point, at some point, something in our materials will be. But I did I it did also lead me to like dig further into what we mean by that. But I did, I, it did also lead me to, like, dig further into what we mean by that sentence, and specifically when, what Mr. Doran had talked about, you know, when we're talking about these opportunities, it is responsive, and so we want to have a diverse array of opportunities, and, and a meaningful piece of that is that they're responsive to what's going on in our community and what our community needs are. So, just to further muddy the not wordsmithing waters.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Do we have anything new at this point, Mrs. Hardy?
Just to add in, because access and choice was mine and Ms. Gillum's group, and I think, well, you have kids in charter schools, I was like, the other ones didn't, that coming out of there, the intention actually wasn't to create more charter schools, and if you look at the initiatives part of it, really that last bullet point captured what they were going for, which is what's been said, to expand educational choices for families, exploring the creation of magnet and focus schools that offer specialized learning opportunities within our neighborhood schools. That's the direction that group, from the feedback that we read, from the community, wanted to go. They acknowledged that there were all these things in charter schools, to Ms. Dillian's point, that we wanted to see filter out to other places, and that's been something I've been pushing in different areas, too, that we, they are, they were created to be these incubators, and then those ideas are supposed to, if they work, go other places and not just be siloed into one school.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. So we are short on time, got about 10 minutes left. Mr. Doran, do you have anything new to add?
I have something new, but I think also something that, just briefly, understanding that some of our charter schools brought things out of their neighborhood schools as their focus. So, I wanted to go to investing in our people, and that, I really, again, on the third bullet, I think it's important that we use the word empowered. I'm not sure that, I just make the observation and think about whether something should be added in, but I think what that also emphasizes, and we may want to highlight, is the fact that they are educators, are professionals, and that we trust them to make professional decisions. I think often enough, that is, that is lost, and I've actually heard numbers of conversations that, well, if only they would, we have to really trust them, and we have to be forward with that, as we provide supports, we provide opportunities, we expose to new ideas and practices, et cetera, I mean, all of that, but to use that knowledge professionally, we trust them to do that. And I think that needs to be endemic in our understanding of the word empowered.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Anything else from board members at this time? Seeing nothing, we will turn it back over to you, Sarah Nana.
Thank you. So in our last 10 minutes or so, we just want to close out and narrate where we are in the process and talk about next steps. And so, what you'll see on this next slide, again, is a collection of quotes that we gathered from our robust and multifaceted community engagement process, and what these quotes really speak to, I think, is at the heart of the discussion that we've had today, that even if we were making proposals around word choices, that was always with the intention of being really explicit and making sure our language is accessible, and that it sets us up for a really clear path towards implementation. And when you look at these quotes, each of them speak to desires and hopes from the community and various stakeholders around what implementation will look like. And when we think about implementation, we know that this is a five-year plan, and so also want to ground us in thinking about what might be the focus or lens for each year as we move forward with implementing this strategic plan. We're not going to go into detail about this, obviously because we're short on time, but wanted to offer it again as a way to think about what those five years will look like. Where we will go next with all of the feedback and proposals that you have offered tonight is that we will work with the project team to update and refine the strategic plan content, the blueprint that we've put together, with the hope that then, with those revisions made, we'll be able to move into a place of voting on and ratifying the strategic plan. And that will set us up as we consider successful implementation, making sure that we're attending to teaming, who will be involved in the governance and execution of the plan, especially as we become more granular at the initiative level. What does communication look like to various stakeholders, especially understanding this is a five-year plan, which will require us to prioritize and think about that phased approach for the pillars in each initiative across those five years, and then to this other piece that I've heard come up in our conversation around progress monitoring. If this is how we're defining impact, how are we going to be collecting that data and making sure that consistently throughout these five years, we are checking in on our progress to know whether we are on track for what we want to achieve by the end of these five years in 2030? Which feels wild to say out loud. So I want to close out just with a checkout, because you know, we love a check-in and a checkout. The checkout question for you is, what is one word to describe how you are feeling after reviewing the strategic plan? One word.
Thank you for the reminder. Hopeful.
Excited.
I'm going to go with excited as well. Excited, excited.
Mr. Doran.
Disappointing.
Confident.
All right, I am actually going to break the one-word protocol, but I, just a couple words that I wanted to say before we close out for tonight. First, Sarah and I both recognize that it is a privilege to be able to visit the different communities for the districts that we partner with. We listen deeply to those conversations that we have in the focus groups, we read every single open-ended comment of those thousands of survey responses that we listed for you, and those resonate with us, and we are always sure, we, it is always our intention to make sure that we bring them to the sessions, to our calls, to our meetings, just to ensure that this is ground, that the strategic plan is really grounded in that community engagement feedback. I also want to thank Dr. Minor and his team for meeting us there, they share that same really strong belief. Sarah and I can also, Sarah can attest to this, but a lot of our colleagues always ask, like, what is going on in Fairbanks? Why do you guys love working with them so much? And it is really because it does feel like a collaborative partnership, where we are all working together, just to achieve what's best for the community, so wanted to name that and thank you for that. Want to thank President Burnett for keeping us on track and accountable tonight, and then also just to the rest of the board for indulging us in these conversations that were really meaningful, indulging the protocols. I felt the community, even with the giggles when Sarah and I were a little mic shy at the beginning of tonight, so just wanted to thank you so much for the discussions and for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for you guys for being here, for all the work. Thank you, board, for the work that has gone into this. It's been a year of hard work and a lot of effort put into this, so it's just much appreciated, sitting here, being a part of it and all that, so good work session tonight. Dr. Minor, do you have anything? No? Fantastic. With that, we are adjourned.